Okay, may I ask?
This is a meeting of the Water Pollution Control Authority in the Town Council Meeting of North Bradford, Connecticut, Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. The Town Council Chamber is at seven, looks like seven eighteen. Michelle, I think. I can't see it.
I got seven thirteen.
Good, that's great. Sounds good. Okay, let's start with a salute to the flag, please.
The Constitution is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just let me say something quick. We did a little ceremony. Mike was there yesterday. Cliff was there. Anthony was there. A little ceremony for...
Councilor Pollicia was there?
Huh?
Councilor Pollicia was also there.
Oh, Ronnie was there, that's right. With his family. Absolutely.
I was there also.
Yeah. I was there too. It worked out really good. It was a nice little ceremony and I enjoyed doing it. And I want to thank Mike for putting everything together and you guys for veterans that showed up and council members. I just want to thank everybody. Sometimes it goes unnoticed. Memorial Day is kind of like, let's go have a picnic. There was more to it than that. So I just want to thank everybody for what they did and all our veterans that gave their lives for us. Okay, Michelle, roll call, please.
Mary Leal.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Rose Ford. Rose, you have no sign of your lawyer.
Just these three here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Judy.
Here.
Councilor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Coe.
Here.
Councilor Pollicia.
Here.
Okay, next, the minutes of the previous meeting, May 18th, 2021, Town Council Meeting.
Shall move.
Second.
That was Councilor Diamond and Deputy Mayor Zampano. Need a vote?
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained. Was it here?
All right, next, we'll move into Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda Correspondence and Citizen Statements. Next is Unfinished Business. There's none. There's none. Next, we have New Business, Nacho Village Active Lifestyle Community Fifty Foller Road, map 27D, lot 45, Sanitary Sewers off Nacho Road, Section A.
I can put this here for now.
Sure.
Good evening.
Aye.
Hi, this item has been before you on a number of times in the past. Actually, 30 years of development of this property at Foller Road. Ninety acre parcel off Foller Road with frontage on Route 80 as well. So, past 30...
Have a microphone?
Kurt, give us a mic.
I can't hear you at all.
Kurt, just watch that cord when you back up.
Yep, all right, thank you very much. Okay, basically, I'm going to do the best I can, just the applicant's engineer or the previous commitment was unable to attend tonight. I would like them to give you an overview, but I think I know enough about it. I can give you an overview of the overall project. It's Fifty Foller Roads, it's a ninety acre parcel on Foller Road and Route 80. Again, it's, over the past 30 years, there's been similar type proposals that have been approved by the Water Pollution Control Authority, but they've never come to fruition. Current proposal for you is for a 208-unit development on the parcel consisting of 99 apartment units and 108 either single-family units or duplex units on the property. Plans were in your packet, that they're reduced scale. This is just an enlargement of the overall site plan, but the detailed plans are in your packet. I reviewed them and they're in accordance with our current regulations. But basically, the proposal is to extend sanitary sewers from this dash line, which is the sanitary sewer easement, a trunk line, an 18-inch trunk line that goes behind Marshfield Apartments to Brookmead Condominiums. And there are just dead ends. It was left in the mid-'70s for potential future extension further to the east on Route 80. Nothing ever happened with it over the years. As part as this development, the proposal is extending town-owned sanitary sewer into the solid green line through the development within a 20-foot easement out to Foller Road at a nominal depth of about 10 feet so that in the future, any future development could tie into that line. It's further east in North Bramford, it would have to be tied in, utilized with a pumping station to pick up the properties further to the east going towards Guilford, if and when that ever happens. As we talked about for a number of years, it still has never happened at this point in time.
Kurt, what size line is that?
This is a 12-inch line through the property. And the green line, again, is proposed to be within a 20-foot easement to be granted to the town, 12-inch. The orange lines are the development, the privately owned sanitary sewers as part of the Nacho Village development. And they will be owned and maintained by the owners' association. Maybe if I could just hit some, I put together a memorandum sort of explaining that, and I have a suggestive motion for consideration of the Water Pollution Control Authority, but maybe I could just hit on some highlights contained in the suggestive motion. Again, it's the 12-inch line from the easement, through the easement over to Foller Road, it's a nominal depth with the anticipation that properties further to the east would require a pumping station to be served by sanitary sewers. In the motion, there's a requirement that the property owner would have to pay a special connection fee based upon a, this being an age-restricted residential development, would be $4,000 per unit for the first five units and $2,000 per unit for the remaining 202 units, which would be required to be paid to the town prior to issuance of a building permit for each of the proposed buildings. The 12-inch sanitary sewer line within the development would be grant, within a town easement, that would be granted to the town upon satisfactory completion of the line and proper execution of an easement document. I've added in there number five for the suggestive motion, a developer shall retain a licensed professional engineering firm, individual who should provide engineering inspection of all sanitary sewers to be constructed within development. They'd have to come before the WPCA with a suggestive engineering firm and/or an individual for the WPCA's approval and final authorization of WPCA. That person would have to monitor, inspect, and as-built sanitary sewer lines within the development. We just don't have, just being a one-man office, we don't have the staff, personnel to monitor that on a regular, routine basis that it requires. So the cost would be put on the developer to cover that. I would imagine the town engineer, the next town engineer would be working with that firm, making sure they had adequate records and they were properly presented to the town. Item six, detailed engineering plans of the sewer line crossing of the wetlands should have, need to be submitted to and approved by the town engineer and the wetlands enforcement officer. There's a couple of wetlands crossings and those are the critical units as part of the development. They're, have to be done correctly. They have a preliminary plan on the, included in the documents I submit to you. It's just an extra provision to make sure that that was all coordinated with the town and the wetlands commission at the time that the actual development was to occur. Require a payment in accordance with our rules and regulations governing the installation of sanitary sewers. They have to pay a $1,500 fee to the town for periodic inspection by the town. It's in our provisions, so they would have to pay that upfront. In addition, any revisions required by a town engineer be included in the final plans approved by the planning and zoning commission. That's a standard condition. Sometimes there's some, when they go through the planning and zoning process, there's some minor changes that occur, just making sure that it's properly documented. That also that the town of North Bramford receives permission from the town of Bramford and the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection to expand the sanitary sewer system. Just a coordination with our receiving body, which is Bramford, Connecticut DEP, who has oversight over sanitary sewers. Item 11 is that the developer would be required to enter into an agreement with the town of North Bramford regarding the operation and maintenance of the community sewer system. The community sewer system requirement documents and defines... They're responsible for, again, the orange lines in here. They're just strictly within their development and there's documents that they have responsibility. Town can require them to do necessary repairs if they find a problem, but the cost would be passed on to the development, not, would not be at the town cost. And lastly, the standard that the developer entered into an agreement with the town, authorize the installation in accordance with the plans and the conditions of approval. That's sort of it in a nutshell. Where they are, just to give you a little history of it, they've gone before the, in the wetlands commission at this point, received approval from that commission. Next one is where, right now, the Water Pollution Control Authority. And then, if they get approval from the Water Pollution Control Authority, the next process would be fear before the planning and zoning commission approval of the site plan for the development.
So Kurt, who pays for the installation of the green line?
They pay for it all.
They pay for it all.
They pay for it all. And again, the one, sort of unique thing to hear is we require them to be financially responsible for having an engineer monitor and provide oversight of the construction. I would imagine the town engineer would be providing periodic inspection, but someone's got to be there on a routine basis, full-time basis. But it's at their cost, and again, another cost that they'd have to pay that special connection fee, which is about $420,000, around numbers for the development. If they're basically buying into the sanitary sewer system.
Kurt, what was the cost again, per apartment for the...
It's $2,000 per unit for an age-restricted residential unit in accordance with our regulations. Normally, if it's a non-age-restricted unit, our current regulations are $12,000, $3,000 per unit. There's a provision that they're, for age-restricted, because I think it was, there's less people, less kids, it was $2,000 per unit.
So they're not getting a discount? That's our...
That's what the regulations provide for. You're going by the regulations. It's $4,000 for the first five units and $2,000 per unit thereafter. But that's what our regulations say.
And this isn't 100%, is this 100% age-restricted?
It's age-restricted development, but it allows for, between, requires that 80 to 90%, 80 to 90% of the units have to be occupied by 55 and older. There's a provision in the regulations and we discussed it the last time.
Yeah, I thought, sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there are some provisions in the regulations allow for a variance of that.
So the 2,000 versus, what was it, 12,000?
12,000.
It's regardless of how many, how the size of the units or...
Yeah, it strictly says age-restricted residential unit.
So...
Generally, they are one or two-bedroom units.
So even if it was a larger unit, like in some developments, you might have three bedrooms or...
There's no distinction between one, two, and three.
It's being that it's, we were just having a conversation before this meeting about the other development over next to Honeywell, but if they have children, are the age of the children restricted in this development?
I can't tell you every, you know, the detail before planning zoning, but there's a limitation on it. There are restrictions.
Because we were saying that some age-restricted developments only allow you to have children 18 years of age and up, not, so in other words, not school-aged kids where it's going to cost the town a lot of money.
Yeah. And I don't know the detail of the planning zoning regulation.
So children could live there?
There's a limitation on it, on that. There are restrictions. I just couldn't quote absolutely.
Where are those restrictions coming from?
Planning zoning regulations and any state regulation that they follow.
Okay, so it's not them sending the wrong regulations.
What's the total number of units?
207. There's 99 apartment units, you know, they may be, they call them apartment units, and then under A, either single units or duplex units.
So anywhere from 20 to 40 units could be, could have children, right? 10 to 20%?
Well, 10 to 20% could have that variation in the age restriction requirement.
Right.
I can't quote to you about the children portion of it.
Okay, but the non-age-restricted could be anywhere from 20 to 40 units?
That's correct.
Okay.
The town attorney reviewed it the last meeting, he said it sort of applies to the whole thing because that's what it comes under from the zoning perspective. Okay. That was the difficulty I was looking at. If it allowed for that, do we charge them a higher number? Sort of the ruling was, no, that doesn't apply.
I don't know if you're the right person to ask this, Kurt, but how is something like that monitored? The children, in other words, what happens if all of a sudden 200 units have children? How is that policed or monitored? How is that controlled?
Yeah. To planning zoning, I don't know the exact details of it, won't.
Usually that's determined by the number of bedrooms that are available. That's what, like where I live, you can only have four people because you have two bedrooms. So that's usually how it's regulated if it isn't an age restricted, you know, 18.
But here, I guess, you can have 20 to 40 units, not age-restricted. So what?
Well, they're age, the unit, they can have to sort of be, my understanding is it's more of an exception to allow up to that many to occupy at one time. That Unit A maybe have complied with everything right now. Down the road, it may not, you know, but it's only up to that amount, you might never, you might have 100% occupancy of fully compliant units. That's my understanding of the regulations.
I guess, I guess what I'm, I'm just trying to, and I'm wrestling with my mind is, how is it controlled? Like how, who's to say it's not 50% unrestricted, age-restricted? I guess it's up to the, I'm thinking out loud, I guess it's up to the organization that's...
I would think it'd be a lot on the association that manages it as well.
Yeah, okay.
And in terms of use, sanitary sewer use, they would be billed on a unit basis, whether they have one person or three persons, they're going to get charged as a dwelling unit. Same thing as a house or another apartment.
Yeah, I wasn't really necessarily looking at it from that, from that point, just the point that either it's age-restricted or it's not, kind of, you know what I mean? Meaning the community.
The age-restricted community provisions.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a quick, go ahead.
I was just going to make the motion.
Just one other question. Vin, just a quick question. When we're talking about age-restricted developments like that, does that include or are there exceptions for people like on disability and stuff like that that might be under the age or do we know? Do you know anything about that?
You'd have to look at the zoning regulations to see if they define age-restricted as extending to people with disabilities. Generally, the answer is no. So age-restricted tends to be 55 and older, or 62 and older, depending upon the development. But it's defined by the zoning regulations.
Okay, just curious.
I'd like to move to approve the motion for sanitary sewers for the Nacho Village Active Lifestyle Community according to pages 14 through 16. It's a long motion. I'm sorry. I don't want to read them all. It's on pages 14 through 16.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Judy. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote? No. Can I ask a question? Yeah, sure, yeah. So are we voting now to approve this whole project or just the sewers?
We're just voting on the sewers.
Yeah, just on the connection.
Planning and zoning has to do the actual approval.
So after this, it's up to them? Yeah. The whole project?
The project has to be approved by the planning and zoning, completely in terms, and usually, there's a developer has developed a declaration that has to be approved. Well, Joe, we've done that before.
Maybe, maybe not, probably should, but not required, yes. Zoning cannot approve anything that is contingent upon the approval of another agency, so it has to go through wetlands, it has to come to us for the sewer connection, et cetera. They have to be approved, then zoning can consider it, and they will make the final decision on it's approved.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? We have a vote, Michelle?
Full in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
All right, thank you. Thanks, Kurt. Next, we have Citizen Statements and Petitions. Okay, nothing, and we will move into the regular Town Council Meeting. First, our reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First, I have the Economic Development Commission, Roger Salloway, monthly report.
Right, you have a, his report is submitted, so it's part of the agenda, and as you recall, the part of that report includes the presentation of the Northford Pines project, and so Economic Development is looking to, asking for guidance from the council in terms of where that request, much like the request here for Fifty Foller Road, if the council is ready to proceed with some type of review or meeting, further meetings with respect to regulations on the pines with respect to that type of luxury apartment building complex would require a look, or the ask at the meeting was to look at the regulations around the fees for the units. So I don't know if that come at the next meeting with the desire to set some type of review in motion or working with the engineer to come up and Economic Development to come up with a proposal or suggest it to the council for that, I can get that ready for the 15. All right, yeah, sorry, it would have to be July, second.
That's okay.
July?
Right, it would have to be the first meeting, would be the July meeting.
What you're feeling? To go off to the July meeting?
Prepare, take a look at it, prepare something for the July meeting for council to take a look at and consider. Okay.
You don't need a motion, do you, Mike?
No. I'll make a note, we'll bring it back.
All right. You have anything else?
No, nothing for, no, nothing more on Economic Development. There's a lengthy report in there, it covers a lot.
Okay. All right, next, we have Parks and Rec. Rose is not here, so we don't have anything. Police Commission.
The next Police Commission meeting is on Monday, June 14th at 5:00 p.m.
All right, next, we have Fire Commission.
And the next meeting is this Thursday, 9/3.
All right, next is Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
We did not meet.
Okay. Next, we have Planning and Zoning.
Next meeting is Thursday, it was canceled, so I haven't been scheduled yet.
Okay. Planning and Zoning Subcommittee.
No meeting.
That committee is meeting next Wednesday, I believe, it's next week for sure.
Yeah, is it?
Wednesday, Joe, Wednesday?
I believe it's Wednesday. Donna, you know?
Yeah, I didn't, I don't have it in my calendar, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Next is Permanent Project Building Committee, which we have North Bramford High School update and North Bramford Police Department update.
Yeah, on the high school update, we have Rusty Malika of QA&amp;M, and we did have a meeting prior to this, so there is one item we would like the council to consider amending the agenda to take up an item we thought was going to be coming before you for the meeting on the 15th, but unfortunately, there is a time constraint with a certain 10-day notice, recommendation of the Permanent Project Building Committee for an award under the hazmat, so if we could later amend the agenda to take up that item, but I'll let Rusty speak to the progress of the project and to that issue.
Hello, good evening. Overall, we're on schedule. We've got a 95% set of documents that will be provided on the 14th of June. That's the set of documents that the final estimate will be based on, so Gilbane will be doing the estimate on that. Our meeting at the state is July 6th. We're, again, on target to meet that deadline. Most of our critical hurdles such as approvals from planning and zoning, I think we've got one left right now, which is the Street and State Traffic Commission, they can't approve it till we've got planning and zoning approval, so since we've received the planning and zoning approval, we're now awaiting the ASJA approval. We have, you know, brought on a number of consultants, including third-party architectural review and code review. One of the, there's several RFPs out there that are going to be decided, you know, this week and next week, the clerk of the works interviews are next week as well. And in general, you know, we're making good progress, we're on budget. Actually, some of the third-party and consultants have come in under budgets, so that's actually increased our contingency. Initially, we had anticipated a 3% contingency going into, into our final, you know, construction phase, we're now a little over 5%. So that's working to our favor, but the key estimate, which is the constructing document 95% estimate, will really tell us where we are. In addition to that contingency, there's also escalation contingency, a CM's contingency, et cetera. So we've got a lot of contingency funds at this point. We'll see where that pans out because we all understand what commodities are doing and how prices have been going up fairly significantly, so the CM will have their estimate. Next week, we'll have the bids for Phase 1 come in. That'll be the first indicator, so the following week, we'll be approving the Phase 1 GMP. That'll go before the Building Committee at their, the following meeting, so I guess that's the meeting of the 14th, maybe. And at that point, our schedule is for the 16th construction... Um, and at that point, our schedule is for the sixteenth, uh, construction, uh, would start, that's the official date. Uh, the Board of Ed, uh, has been moving out, um, you know, personnel, making arrangements for the space, especially the spaces that are going to be demolished. Uh, so they're working on, on making the move to get teachers' equipment, et cetera, out of those spaces and be, be prepared uh, for those spaces to be turned over to the C M, which will occur on the, you know, officially on the, on the sixteenth. Uh, hence the hazmat consultant, what we're trying to do is get a jump on all these hazmat, um, inspections. And so, the consultant that we're bringing on board, uh, what we'd like them to do is to, uh, actually get a waiver for the ten day notification. Um, there's one that's required for deep, uh, and one that's required for, uh, the E P A. So, they're, they'll work with us on getting that, uh, waiver for those ten day notifications. It's, uh, it's an added service that they will provide somewhere in the range of seven hundred and fifty dollars for, for the, the time spent talking to the, negotiating with the, the various agencies to get that waiver. And that, that's pretty much where we are. We've, you know, we've discussed things like sole sourcing, uh, on certain equipment for our security. Um, and we're just looking at options and alternates to include in our bids, so that when we do go out to bid, there's going to be a list of alternates that the committee is aware of, that they will, um, you know, will have in our back pocket to say, okay, we want some of these things, we can have add alternates to make sure that once the bids come in, we are well within our budget. And if not, then we have the alternates to fall back on. So, with that, any questions?
No.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rusty.
Thank you.
Mike, anything on the Police Department?
Uh, yes. Um, Joe is here as well, but, uh, that, that is moving along, and the, the bid is out for the G C, General Contractor. Um, uh, Bill Silver was here this evening to, to brief, uh, the, the committee on that. Um, the bid is due back, I believe, on the eleventh?
Be eleven to two P M.
On the eleventh? On the eleventh. They're going through R F Is and addendums right now to get that, uh, those answered to, to have the bids complete for the eleventh. That it'll go to, come back to them, uh, on the fourteenth, uh, for, uh, review. And if ready, uh, to hopefully, we're trying to tee that up for the, uh, fifteenth, your meeting on the, on the fifteenth as well for the, for the P D. So, um, there is, uh, uh, Bill Silver said, uh, there was a strong response, uh, to the bidders, uh, or potential bidders, that companies that showed up for the, for the walkthrough, so they, they anticipate, uh, a good, a good response. So, at this point, they're optimistic that they'll have a good response.
When's that bid gonna open?
Uh, on the eleventh. Yep, so it's moving forward. Anything else, Michelle, on the, on the P D side?
No, I think that's basically it, the bids.
Yeah, so, uh, back to the high school, if you, if the, the council wouldn't mind amending the agenda to add up, I, I believe the appropriate place would be New Business, thir, item thirteen, uh, E. Um, award of the, um, R Q P, uh, number eighteen for hazmat services.
Okay. Any new motion?
Sub moved.
Seconded.
Michelle, motion, uh, by Councilor Fornin, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Can I have a vote?
Full in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Abstained?
Uh, next we'll move into a town manager's report, an update on COVID nineteen, test, testing and vaccine.
Yeah, so the, the, the numbers are holding. Um, we're looking pretty good. The, the vaccination rate, uh, again, uh, for Connecticut, for North Branford, uh, looks strong, looks healthy, um, and it, it's at a level where we can be proud of. Um, and hoping that the, the cases, uh, will continue to drop. Um, we maintain a, uh, I think as, I don't think it's included in this report I had, but the other data I had was, our ranking was one fifteen, and our positivity, uh, percent was one point seven. So, um, at this point, uh, we continue to meet and talk with, uh, the Health Department about the trend and, uh, where we are. So, it looks solid, it looks like it's holding, so, um, you know, keep fingers crossed that we'll continue on this trend and that it's a positive trend for us at this, at this point. Um, you know, there are, there are a few, um, anomalies, bumps in the road, if you will. Uh, we, we had one case of positive, uh, in, in one of our department's, uh, employees, um, so we're monitoring that. And I hope that it's just a, a one-off. Um, but again, we're not out of the woods yet, but overall, we're, we're okay.
Can you tell me why or how boards and commissions can make a determination whether they have a Zoom meeting or they have an in-person meeting? Again, a lot of complaints that certain boards and commissions are Zooming when the town council and other boards are meeting in person.
Yeah, I think it was just more-
Do we have any regulations? Does the council have to set, uh, policy for that?
I, I, we don't have regulations, we don't have a policy, it was more of, uh, just guidance, uh, from the Health Department in, in terms of where we, where we were and where the comfort level of the, uh, individuals, whether, I, I don't, I haven't probed to know whether they're, uh, they're vaccinated or not, or, or what's going on. But I could certainly go through each, uh, each commission and, and level, uh, to see, uh, where they're at. But I knew, I, I think you're right, Mike, they are, they, they are still meeting, uh, virtually, some of them. I think they're prepared to come back to, to meet here. Uh, and I'll just find out how soon they're gonna come back. At this point, there's no, no rule or policy in place or anything like that, it was just more of a comfort.
I think if they, if they don't come back shortly, we should look at some type of policy, because it's been dragging on a long, long time.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think there's, and again, I have to talk to the, um, to the commission members and to the department heads, but I don't know that there's any, um, protocol or anything that would prohibit, uh, the, the, the commission members from, from coming back. Uh, but again, I don't know the full details, but I can certainly find out.
Okay. Mike, with regards to the employee that was positive, do you guys do contact tracing?
Yeah, we refer, uh, to, um, East Shore Health District that does that work.
What about with other employees, like who they may have been exposed to?
Yeah, internally, yeah.
Internally, you do it to?
Absolutely, department head will do that, yeah.
And just personally, I'm just curious, what, so let's say somebody here, I was exposed to somebody here that ended up being positive, but I'm vaccinated. Would I still need to stay out, or because I'm vaccinated, am I still able to keep coming into work? How does that work?
Um, so, if I understand you right, if, 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 if you're vaccinated, but you're exposed?
But you're exposed to somebody who tested positive, one of your coworkers tests positive, but you're vaccinated, do you still have to stay out for a certain number of days? Or, or can you continue to come into work?
Uh, I, I have to, I, I'm, I know Michael went through this, and I can't remember, maybe somebody does.
At the state, they make them quarantine.
You don't have to, if you're vaccinated, right?
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious.
I think it depends on the exposure.
Yeah.
It depends on if you were with somebody, like sitting in a car, or, it depends on the exposure you have to the person.
Well, I know it's, like, it's usually like, what is it, fifteen minutes, within six feet, not a mask, I hope.
Right.
Yeah.
If you were determined that, but for the most part, like now you walked in here and walked out, probably not.
All right.
Okay, thank you, I'm just, just curious.
That's even if you're vaccinated.
Because you're, you can still get it if you're vaccinated.
Yeah.
Still have a longer case.
People if you're vaccinated.
I think they're more, trying to be more proactive than you don't carry on to someone else.
Right.
Okay. Anything else on that, Mike?
No, I think that's it.
Any questions? Any more questions? Uh, okay, let's, uh, B is additional hours for purchasing secretary.
Yeah, so this is, issue originated with the Permanent Project Committee, uh, from their last meet, not tonight's meeting, but the previous meeting. Um, they had a long discussion and felt that there, it, it, they're, they think there's some, um, risk, I guess, uh, with, um, potential, uh, how do they phrase it, failure, uh, within the minutes here, what they say, um, critical failure, I think is what they, uh, said, the amount of paperwork, uh, that they don't want things falling through the, through the cracks with respect to, uh, purchasing. Um, and so, they recommended to the town council that ten additional hours per week be provided to purchase secretary, secretary to mitigate single point of failure. Um, concerned about the amount of paperwork, and again, this has been discussed at the council level and, and through the budget process, but, um, and I explained that to the Permanent Project Building Committee members, but they felt, uh, to, they wanted to make the motion and, and, uh, send that along to the, to the council. Uh, they just don't want, um, they want, they want more help for the, for the purchasing department and, um, don't want any failure or anything to fall through the cracks, so to speak. So, all I could tell them was that I would bring it forward, um, but it's your call, not, not their, it's this body and not the Permanent Project Building Committee, so, that's why it's coming as their, as their recommendation, and I explained that to them. So, um, whether you want to move forward with that or not, but they, they had a pretty lengthy discussion about that.
Did something fall through the cracks that they're referring to?
No, I wouldn't, but we're, 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 I gotta be honest, we're, we're teetering and trying to get, uh, again, make sure that everything is on the critical path, just like it was, uh, to- tonight. Luckily, we have the flexibility where we have a meeting typically on Monday before the Tu- Tuesday meeting of the council, uh, so that we have regular meetings like this, when that can, the agenda can be amended, uh, to take up the hazmat, um, award. Uh, there is a number of, with, with two simultaneous projects going on, there, there is, there is a heightened, uh, um, anxiety that we're gonna, you know, drop something.
Didn't we just free up ten hours for the purchasing agent?
Well, in, in theory, yeah, for, for freeing up hours.
So, this, with the additional ten, it would actually be twenty?
Well, we're, we're doing it by way of, of, yeah, you're right, to, uh, through the social services and adding a person, season a person.
It's like a whole nother part-time person.
What's that?
So technically, it's like a whole nother part-time person, because we freed up ten, you're asking for ten more.
Yeah, so basically, it's, 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 it's really getting a full dedication of thirty-five hours to, uh, purchasing and projects.
I talked to the member of the Permanent Project Building Committee this evening, and he felt that it's really about another month in terms of the heavy demand, and then it kind of will ease up a bit, and it wasn't really necessary at this point. With, by adding those extra ten hours that we did, that should suffice.
Okay, what are we gonna, what are we gonna do with it?
There's no motion, there's nothing to do.
Just let it go. Okay. All right, uh, so we'll move into community events and presentations. Nothing. Next we have citizen statements, uh, petitions and correspondence. Hi, Bill.
Bill Savage, down on, uh, Sunny Side Drive. Reference on April twentieth, uh, you had an update proclamation that you didn't read. Uh, it just so happened the chairman of our committee was sitting in the room, the woman, Mary Bingl, forty years on different commissions and heads up our committee. I thought it was rather insulting that you didn't even read it. You don't intend to read it, don't bring it to the meeting, just mail it. Yeah, I want to be part of the solution, but sometimes you gotta be part of the problem first. Uh, something good, the police department, you, you put some money, and they're, they're doing something with the speeders, and that's, I had mentioned, I go in a couple of police meetings about speeding, and, and it's, it's a good thing. And they're doing, and a couple of meetings ago, they, uh, they talked about A T Vs, and they kind of promised to keep it on the agenda until they feel as though they could do something. Uh, it wasn't much discussion, but they also brought up a point that with the population, uh, Walter, if you remember right?
Yeah.
Population under twenty thousand, they can't confiscate the bill.
I think it's, yeah, it's either fifteen or twenty, I'm not sure, but yeah, we, because we're-
They're gonna ask, uh, Mr. Candelora for a verification, I think, that's kind of crazy, but.
They're trying to change that, though.
All right, uh, anyway, I got busy now, I just got a couple more things here. Um, boards and commissions, uh, I've mentioned this at least twice before in this room, you should be videotaping more, all these meetings. I don't know if you're doing the permanent project thing, but I mean, that's, that's a, that's a given, you gotta do that one, even if it protect yourself or whatever. But fire police and, uh, Park and Rec. Now, last week's Park and Rec is, uh, is an issue. Remember a couple of years ago, you had an issue, you lost half of the commission, and it wasn't on videotape, so you had to get an investigation. Well, two years ago, at that time, there was a, there was many, many minutes that they wouldn't pass for over a year. Finally, they got passed, uh, with some sort of a stipulation. And then last October, one of our more respected residents in this town actually made a statement after me. I was at the, that meeting, three of us spoke, different subjects, but she got a, a statement and asked for it to be included in the minutes. They didn't pass that October minutes until last week, and there was a ruling by our attorney, and Mr. Paul's here, that they didn't have to include the lettering. What kind of transparency is that? I mean, this wasn't a fly-by-night person who gives blabbers. This was a respect and memory of the community. I think it's terrible. Uh, Mr. May mentioned a parade. Uh, right from, uh, listen, you guys all did a great job with COVID, especially Board of Ed. But for me, from the beginning, we know that, uh, we were taking, uh, you know, always being cautious, and right up till you decided not to do the parade. You remember that night, uh, it kind of swung one way, it sounded about like it was good, and then all of a sudden, a couple of people mentioned kids, and they were down the drain. I didn't expect it to happen, anyway. But, uh, I think we could have put more effort into the yesterday's service. Not the service so much, could have expanded on that, but the fact that there was no press release. The sound put a piece in there that she remembered when you canceled the parade, but there was nothing other than canceling like seeing a kid. And, but I understand there was a press release that never made the paper. You got two newspapers. So, the people up in here, they don't know what's going on, they were on social media, is it a parade or not? Is it a ceremony? So, we had a nice ceremony yesterday, but a couple dozen people, if any. And the press release said council members, May was there, Ron was there. I expected more, I said, maybe, maybe they're gonna turn up because, you know, it's a parade or nothing. So, with that, I, uh, I want to remind Mike, five years ago, it was mandated, and I, I don't like the way he used that word mandate, it sounds like bad, bad word. But the state, uh, required, it looks a, a, uh, each town have a veteran council, right, right?
Or what?
Coordinator council, they call it a council. I mean, I have paper clippings that other towns have it. I have two, three pages of paperwork, and I'm not gonna bother with it tonight. But anyway, uh, you, you, you appointed someone at that time who was supposed to have set up a committee. I actually met with this woman one time, because I was doing something in town, and I thought she wanted to get involved with it. Didn't happen, she didn't do nothing, never set up a committee. Three years later, there's a different person, uh, that's in charge, that took over for that person. But because of COVID, hasn't been able to set up a committee either. So, I'm actually asking you tonight that we move forward with that. Uh, uh, we, I, I actually talked to Kathy, and, uh, you know, again, we've been holding off since, uh, because of COVID. But I think, uh, you know, I gotta speak about the V F W, and that they, they used to really be the ones to initiate the parade, and that's how it should be. And then, for the years, they, they neglected, and, of course, you know, it's close, and it was put in the hands of Gina, the executive secretary, which is almost unfair, and she does a great job of it. But I think it's time that we have a council. I think we can be helpful. You know, we don't have a legion, we don't have a VFW, we don't have a counseling. If you go next town, Branford has all those, plus they have the counseling center. They have the, the veterans council also, but they're lower end of the poll, because the other, they have parade committee and all that. So, I think we should go forward with that, set up that thing, I think it can be helpful. Maybe even to Lisa in the social services office, she's, she does a great job with veteran stuff. So, in the council, the last thing, I just want to mention something about the trash contract, and I'm not gonna get into a lot of stuff, because I'm on that committee. And because I'll sum it up by saying, I was disappointed, I was disappointed during the whole process going. You know, we really started talking about that last September, and the big issue was getting Mike there, so we could kind of feel him out as to what goes on, maybe other towns, won't it? For me, it didn't happen quick enough, I don't know. But then we get into the whole thing, and basically, my, my point is that I was disappointed. I think the whole process got messy. I didn't really expect the fact that all of a sudden we got rejected loads, I mean, we didn't deal with that before. All of a sudden, Mira was up in the air, and that wasn't, and then we backed out of the whole thing, which, I don't understand that at all. But it really got messy, and I, I'm disappointed. I thought we could do something, at least, say like a status quo, or, you know, they could get their usual three percent. And finally, in that subject, I'm really disappointed with the council, because I think it was Mike that mentioned how hard we worked on it. Michelle does an excellent job with the minutes. Anybody read those minutes? Our meeting's run through, anybody zooming? I mean, there's many of yous here, you get a million dollar contract. Did anybody think to zoom in and see what's going on? You know, basically, Mike was there? Again, disappointed. So the bottom line is, and I think year to date, we're up around nine hundred and four thousand right now, another month ago, is that right, Anthony? It's okay, I looked it up. But anyway, so we're getting another month to go. So the last three years, we've been running around nine hundred thousand. And we got the benefit, actually, the last couple of years, for free recycling, John was paying for it, if you remember all that. So we get it free, so that's kept us under a million. So you just approved a month ago, whatever it was, a hundred and twenty-eight, a million two hundred and eighty thousand. That's twenty-five percent more. And I can't see why, how I could buy it. How you didn't maybe throw the, throw the bid out, start all over again, anything? That's all there is. Unless somebody's got a question.
Bill, if you don't mind me asking, you were, you're unhappy with the way we went with the contract for the sanitation? You're not happy with the, with the choice we made?
Yes, basically, yeah.
I mean, the company we went with was the cheapest company.
Yeah, well, it was pretty close at the end, but the, I think it was mentioned, I know I mentioned it, Maria mentioned one lead, that thing, that, that bid was only in the sound. And we had the same two companies bid, and I thought John was gonna bid, but we briefly talked about putting it in the new Haven register, see who else was out there. But I mean, just to finish up that thought, we could have really, if you thought about it, I mean, you had John in for five years and two two-year extensions. You could have sat down and went down another two year until everything settled down. Now you're locked into five more years again. And some were suspect after the first two. And I'm speaking as a citizen here, not, not my committee, I'm not committing to anything here.
I'm just saying, as a council member, we had two companies to pick from, and I, me personally, I think we made the right choice.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is, why didn't you say no, this is, this, we gotta go back out the bid, collapse the bids, or do some, I mean, I mean, there's not even the update. Have you thought of that?
You gotta have reason to collapse a bid. Why are you gonna collapse?
Yeah, you-
Because you didn't like it.
Your reason was twenty-five percent more. That's, that was crazy, Mike.
Let me ask you something. The recommendation out of your committee was what?
Oh, it's a big long thing, I don't know, I can't, I really shouldn't say, but-
Which, which company did you guys recommend?
American Waste.
And they were more than John's, correct? So why did you guys give us that recommendation if now you're asking?
No, they were more than John's at the end. John, John dropped sixty thousand, and then he dropped a few more.
So, but why did you guys make a recommendation if now you're asking, if you're saying we should have collapsed the bid?
After the, after you got the pages and the recommendation from our committee, there was two more meetings. And they, all waste was called in, and John's was, had a meeting the day before. In fact, I didn't know for a week and a half what the final bid was, because it wasn't in the agenda packet, because the agenda packet is done a week before. Anything after that doesn't get fed in, so we had no meeting, so that was, that was only the day before, it was like the eleventh hour. But even, even, we're only an advisory committee, we didn't, we didn't approve the contract, I mean, we had an advisor, and what was, I think that was a good summation, the question wrote it up. But I mean, you guys brought nothing up, disappointed, really.
Bill, just to let you know, I mean, we spent a lot of hours on that, and Mike went back and forth with them, and had them, what, twice sharpen their pencils and rebid two different times. So, I mean, we had a lot of time on that, and we didn't go initially what they had, we asked them both to bring the prices down, they did it two separate times.
Yeah.
And then we sat there and went through it very carefully, and we went with the cheapest company that we've had in town for years, and I know I was confident with my vote. I appreciate your, I was, I was, I was confident the way I went.
You were confident signing on for twenty-five percent more.
With the two choices we had, and the prices they-
It was gonna be twenty-five percent no matter what, though.
I don't think so.
That was your recommendation out of your committee, was to go with the, the more expensive out of the two?
No, it was my recommendation. Now, you're gonna ask me to speak something for the committee, and I don't want to.
Well, it is what, it is what it is. I mean, unless you prema, unless your committee prematurely made a recommendation of us.
I was, I was kind of disappointed that it went to has waste and recycling. I don't know how a trash bid goes to has waste and recycling committee for a recommendation. I mean, they're not, they're not the trash, they're not the has waste trash, they're not, they're has waste and recycling. And we got them approving a trash bid for the town of North Branford? That, 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 that really amazes me that this happened.
One of the things that the, the committee did request, given the fact that they are tasked to research this, many of the other committees and commissions have someone from the council sitting at their meetings, and especially given the size of this contract and the due diligence that they put forward. And I do believe that the recommendations were not read. If someone from the council was there in the process, they could have probably conveyed all of the information more clearly and understood from the onset the process that occurred. Because it isn't, everyone was asking for comparing apples to apples, and it wasn't that clear cut. We're now involved with a contract with Mira, who John's was using, and then they came in and said, we can't do this anymore, it was too expensive, they backed out of their contract. They're still using them, or they're gonna use Walenford, but there's no provision saying if those two things cannot happen, well then what? Are they gonna come back again and say, we can't do this anymore? But yet, there was a five-year contract signed for. Given all of these-
That's not a hundred percent accurate. That's not a hundred percent accurate, because John's came in and said he has at least five or six other places he can bring garbage, so.
If he can name, there are five places in Connecticut. Anyways, there are details, if someone from the council was on this committee, I think it would be a smoother process, and I think, given the size of the contract, it might prove you to recommend that someone be on that committee, especially during the budget.
That wouldn't make sense.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks. Okay.
I got a statement. I got a couple calls, and maybe our town attorney has a little knowledge on this, too. The farm entertainment ordinance that was brought by planning and zoning, and one member of planning and zoning fits personally within the lineage, or the distance of one of these entertainment centers. And my question is, is it a conflict of interest for that person to make those recommendations, or sit on that board, or vote for that? And secondly, appointments to these boards and commissions. We, as a council, should really look at appointments to boards and commissions for people that have a personal vendetta against a company, or an organization, or people. And this is starting to come up on a couple of boards and commissions, especially inland wetlands and stuff like that. So we gotta be very careful, as a council, who we put on these boards and commissions. We're looking for somebody neutral, not somebody that gets up and speaks at meetings and has problems, or has a conflict.
Should we get over to the desk?
Amber Lawrence. So, and I spoke to Vinnie once on this before, and maybe he could look into it a little bit more and just see what it is, or is that part of the educational program that we should present to these boards and commissions? You know, as when a committee man should vote, or abstain, or, you know, recuse themselves from a personal comment or a situation like that? Or boarding property owners.
Can I piggyback right on that?
Yeah.
I think if, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, if someone's asking for a deck to be built, or bringing a proposal that is for their property specifically, that seems like they shouldn't be voting on that. But if other than that, any sort of land use decision that you make, we as residents affects a, like a broad policy, like farm use or, you know, business use, it's not the same as voting on something that directly affects your property. I mean-
Well, it would be, I mean, so, I don't think it would be a conflict for the individual to propose an idea, but I do think it would be a conflict for the individual to vote and participate in the deliberation as the body politic and then vote. Because if I own a farm, and I am, so I have proposed a farm entertainment regulation, if I'm going to personally benefit from that in some way, so my land is gonna be enhanced as a result of that, I believe I should abstain from that deliberation and that vote. You know, because it's, it's not only, when you're dealing with conflicts of interest, you're not dealing only with actual conflicts, but you're dealing with the appearance of a big variety. And so, that's, you know, so-
Well, this, this was the farm entertainment ordinance, and it was a two-hundred-and-seventy-five foot setback, and if you measure from the commissioner's property line to that building, it falls within that distance. How the hell did they come up with two-hundred-and-seventy-five foot setback when there's nothing in any ordinance? There's twenty-five foot or fifty foot is the most in, in any building ordinance, you know, noise ordinance, you know. There's, there's nothing at two-seventy-five feet. And funny, to T, it fits within the distance between his property line and the entertainment center. So, that's, that's what brought everybody's keen awareness that this is wrong, it shouldn't happen.
Mr. Mayor, this is all public knowledge because it's on videotape. I'm thoroughly discussed with two commissions, planning and zoning, and inland wetlands. We're trying to, and I've talked to the town manager, so he's aware of where I came from. He talked to me eight o'clock Friday night as a courtesy call, because I, it bothered me all day Friday. One of the people that has an application on inland wetlands, and I'll keep the names out of it to be polite, I feel was harassed by the meeting held last Wednesday. There was a threat made by one of the commissioners that he would personally watch this person do some, take down a bridge, and he wanted to be there, watch him take it down unnecessarily. We gotta start being user-friendly, not user-unfriendly. It, it riled me up, and I'm still riled up. Abuse of power, abuse of knowledge. Let's cut some slack to these poor people trying to do stuff in this town, or do you want to just close the town up? What do you want to do? It was blatant, and you can go on Totaka TV, go back at the inland wetlands commission, go to about the twenty-minute mark, and watch the insults. Disgusting. I would like to see that gentleman removed. Planning and zoning, I'd like to see that commissioner removed for abuse of power, because that was, I'm former ag commission chairman, so we were involved, myself, Willie Danle Cameron, and luckily, Keith Bishop, because those values that were set out by that commissioner would put Keith Bishop out of business in Northford. And you can go back to videotape, everything I'm saying is on videotape. And Keith says, well, I guess I gotta close my parking lot, because your footage is so big, I can't use my parking lot. I gotta cut down apple trees, because your, the distance you want between houses and my farm, I gotta go out of business in Northford. So that night, as hard as planning and zoning pushed for, they had to withdraw that, because it was so ridiculous. But it was handwritten for a certain individual to be not affected or by a certain other business in town. Abuse of power, prove me wrong. Do a study, and anybody that wants, I'll give you the film dates, and it's on Totaka TV. And we had to sit through this, and we had to listen. Carrie luckily gave them the proper legal advice, you have to completely withdraw this text amendment. It's too, it stretches too far, it alters way too much information. And Harry, the chairman, excuse me, I said I wouldn't mention their names, the chairman says, what can we do? Can we table it? What can we do? Carrie says, no, you have to completely withdraw it. So under aggravation that night, they withdrew it, because they were not happy they had to withdraw it. Later on that same night, one of the planning and zoning members wanted to abstain from something. Three times he asked to abstain, and the chairman told him he couldn't abstain, he had to give me a yes or no. I believe that's a violation of Robert's rules, is it not, Mr. Attorney? And that was let to slide. This has gotta stop, this stuff has gotta stop in our town, and I'm here to be the bad guy. I'm not here to make friends, I don't need any more friends, I'm seventy-three years old, I don't need any more friends. But that's gotta be looked into, these people gotta be moved. When they make these mistakes constantly, and they abuse their positions, they're hurting our town, and it's gotta stop. And it's gotta stop with you people, and this gentleman's gotta put these people up on charges, I don't care what you call it. Their behavior was disgusting. They gotta be pulled out of their position, because they're only gonna continue to do it. I could give you other instances, I wanna make sure my facts are right, but I, but there's just, I, I have no life, so I watch these stupid movies, these, these shows, right? And this is what you see. My wife laughs at me because I yell at the TV. But it gets to the point where Mike catches hell, because I can't yell at the TV, it won't talk back, but Michael at least listened to me. So, I'd like to officially turn this over to the town attorney, I'll give him the dates of the films, the Robert's rules that was violated, the personal actions of that commissioner that, in the planning and zoning, that would not abstain, the planning and zoning- the planning and zoning gentleman that kept, he wants to be there when a certain individual in town has to pull down a temporary bridge, and he wants to watch it happen. That is abuse of power. It's disgusting. It's not how North Branford works. So I'll go, I'll do whatever I have to do to help you guys get this information out. But it's out there. I'm not making this up. Totaka TV shows me this, and then they have it on the reruns. So you do what you got to do, but this cannot continue. You're hurting the farmers, you're hurting the citizens. The farmers are scraping to get a job done. And they want to, they want to micromanage all the farmers, because it's a group, a personal dispute between a commissioner and a farm owner. And that's abuse of power. I don't care how you look at it. Thank you.
Cliff, I have, I have a...
For your question, too.
Go ahead.
I have a complaint about that abstention that you're talking about, and we're looking into it. Mike knows about it also.
Well, yeah, because it's not right.
No, it hasn't gone unseen.
It hasn't been fair.
Right.
It's a personal vendetta. Both of them are, basically.
We have to discuss this with the town attorney and see what we come up with.
Yeah, Mike and Vinnie, can you, if you're not already looking into it, can you look into it and then just give us a recommendation?
Because I just don't like, you guys, you're great to work with. I mean, we argue a little, but we're all friends when we walk out here. I don't, you do, you did an excellent job with the budget in COVID year. You did excellent meetings. You guys are the last of the good guys on commissions. Everybody else is covered with two or three agendas to their meetings. It's not right. There's only one agenda, this one for here. And it should be for every commission. And like Mike says, it should be in here. This text amendment got snuck through on Zoom. And I asked the chairman, "Why aren't you notifying all the farmers in town? If this is something, it affects just farmers, shouldn't farmers know about it?" And I was told, "Well, we don't do that." "Oh, you don't?" So I did it on social media, and they got upset about that. And I said, "Well, you're not telling the farmers." Luckily, Keith Bishop, who's a very smart man, helped us prove them wrong by doing an overlay of what this was going to do to his property. And it's all on the tape. It was in January that happened, and I'll give you the dates. This other thing was just last week. And there's just way too much power misused in way too many departments. And they got to stop. And the chairman, they let it happen. You know, you know the power to gavel. If something gets out of control, the gavels should hit.
Right, right.
And that's, well, they must be using a cotton ball hammer, because I can't hear them ever. I better stop.
You've got a new town planner coming in, so they're going to try to push this again, so...
Well, Mike and I talked, okay.
Without him having any background, so be prepared for that.
Okay, Michael, this is all public knowledge. I complained about him, too, because one of the guys at inland wetlands said, "I didn't know about the meeting tonight." And I believe the town planner, if you go to the tapes, said, "Well, legally, I don't have to post it anywhere." I told Michael, "We've got enough secrets in this town. Let's get those dates of all the meetings back in the sound." Why does this man not, and he keeps saying, "Well, where I was before." Well, you're not there before. You're in North Branford now. Put that all behind you. Don't bring their messes here. Work within our system that's worked for years. Don't try to rewrite everything. He's rewriting stuff. I don't know who's checking what he's rewriting, but there's stuff he's changing, too. And I don't know if he's sliding it through these commissions. But it doesn't need to be changed. It's always worked. Why are you coming to reinvent a wheel in a town you never lived in? You don't have any ownership for that. Sure you came from down Fairfield County. Well, this is farm country, not Fairfield County. So back off at just local, and that's something else I had on my list. So I'm here, if you guys, I'll work, I'll talk to you, I'll do whatever. I want to see it stop. I'm an honest man. I've worked with this honest man. We've got a good worker, a hell of a welder, let me tell you that. He fixed me up.
Cliff, I appreciate everything you said. What meeting was that now, if you don't mind me asking? What meeting was it?
Last Wednesday night, they had an inland wetlands. That was when the, and it's on Totaka TV. And the farm thing was planning and zoning, January, the last week in January, I think, is when the text amendment got shot down. But we had been fighting against it since December and both January meetings. And planning and zoning was pushing it, and pushing it, and pushing it. And finally, luckily, we had managed through Keith Bishop to get the state person from this farm, we were involved. Keith Bishop involved, and while Willie Delacamera, another local farmer, myself. And we just said, "This isn't right. Deal with it." And it was still being pushed very heavily by the chairman and by that one. And again, we'd have to go to the tape to verify it, and maybe that's something the attorney we can work with. But I don't believe that commissioner ever abstained from anything.
He never, he took part in it.
Huh?
He took part in it.
Yeah, so he's abusing his power. He should be removed from any commission he's on. And so should the other gentleman that insulted the applicant. Whether you like the applicant or not, you don't harass him. You don't threaten him, that I'm going to sit there and watch you take this down. That is, that is not right. I mean, it's, no, it doesn't sit well with me, as you can see. And this poor guy called it Friday afternoon, because I've been sitting on it all day Friday. But again, the kind of manager is, he called me on his own time, on his own dime, and we had a very nice talk.
I appreciate your time, Cliff, thanks.
Okay, I'll give you whatever you need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we'll move into resignations and appointments. We have the appointment of Peter DeSantis to the Regional Water Authority District's Representative Policy Board, term to expire June 30th, 2024.
So...
Second.
Was that you, Mike?
Yes.
All right. Motion was made by Councilor Diamond, second by Councilor Dooty. Can I have a vote, Michelle, please?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay, next we have unfinished business discussion in action. Discussion in action, drainage pipe tie-in to public works from new police facility.
Yeah, actually, both items, A and B, are just placeholders there. We have no action for either of those items.
A and B, Mike?
Yeah, no, nothing to report on A or B.
Okay, all right. Next, we have update on North Farm's park fence.
Yeah, so we continue to monitor the situation. And I wasn't able to get out there on site, but I was there last week with Fran and looking, and also coordinating with the town attorney. The situation is such that the firm or company is attempting to cure the problem, I guess is the best way to say it. I don't know if that's a legal term, but...
Yeah, yeah, so what happened was last, last Wednesday?
Yeah.
The vendor showed up on site with the proper fence wire, but questionable whether or not the polls were correct. What we decided to do, since we had not paid the vendor any money, is to allow the vendor to proceed, although we did put the vendor on notice that we believed that the material, some of the materials that he was using was not to the spec of the bid. I wrote a letter to his lawyer. We also received a response back from the surety, and we're going to have a conference next week with the vendor and the surety. The vendor is claiming that the town is in reach, because the town has not paid any money to the vendor in accordance with the terms of the contract. The town hasn't paid the vendor any money, because the vendor has failed to perform up until this moment in time. So we'll have, we'll have a discussion and probably conflict over that issue. But at the moment, and I've been talking with Fran and with Mike, the question is going to be, is the installation of the fence adequate for our purposes to serve our needs? If the answer is yes, and we then accept that fence in its form, which would not be in accordance with the bid specs, we would then go back to the vendor and seek to get a price reduction for, because the, I believe it's scheduled 20 pipes rather than scheduled 40 pipes, so there's a difference in value to what the town received. So that's something that we're going to look into to see whether or not the fence is sufficient to satisfy the town's needs. And if it is, then, you know, we'll engage the vendor in conversation about getting credit for not receiving what the bid specs require. But it's my understanding the fence wire is adequate, but the piping is not of the right scale.
Well, undetermined at this point. We're looking to get a measurement, I think, directly of how to measure, whether or not the gauge or schedule is accurate in place at this point. The wire and the fencing itself, yes.
Well, you could almost see the difference between a 20 and a 40.
Well, so I have scheduled 40, and we're just, we're crossing our teeth and down our eyes. We just want to make sure that what we have, scheduled 40, and what he has is scheduled 20. And it definitely looks like scheduled 20. And some of the pipes have been painted, the black paint. They were all painted, but they went back and half of them got repainted.
Is that all the posts, Franny, and all the top tubes and bottom tubes are all not the size?
It's difficult to see, because some of them are powder coated, and some of them are painted. So the scheduled 40 that I have, that I believe is scheduled 40, is substantially...
What's the bid specification say about powder coating versus painting?
It does, I don't think it does.
I don't think it...
Okay.
That's part of the little issue there, but still the schedule of the pipe is... So I had gotten samples, I just had to verify it. And I got some of his pipe.
And we decided to allow the vendor to proceed, because if we told the vendor, "No, don't come on site," and we wanted to go with an alternative vendor, it would have taken the town probably another eight to 12 weeks to get this project advanced, and we would end up losing most of the season. So since we were able to determine that the fence wire was of the right gauge, you know, we decided to advance the project and at least get the fence up. But we will regroup tomorrow, when I'm in town hall, to discuss next steps. And a week from tomorrow, we'll have a conference with the surety and the vendor to discuss what we're going to do with respect to the pricing.
Now, Ben, we voted to pull the bond, right?
Yes, and I wrote that letter.
Okay.
So I, after you voted, I, so I received the bond. The bond requires that we do certain things. One of the things the bond requires is that we request that, one of the first thing that we have to do is declare the vendor in default, which we have done. We then have to request, within 15 days, a conference, which we have done. And we're going to have that conference.
Okay.
Franny, I have the gauge for measuring that.
Okay, I'll stop now, see you.
Okay, anything else? All right. Next, we have a request from the superintendent of schools for permission to use the Auger House for special education school work program for 2021, 2022 school year.
Yeah, this was on the last meeting and was postponed or brought back pending the approval from the Board of Education. So there's an email from the superintendent with the captioning, a motion from the Board of Education for both the use of, a request to use Auger House and the special education excess cost, which that's the next item. But the Auger property is in that motion.
Okay, that went through the Board of Ed, Mike?
It did, yes.
All right. Okay.
So, you know, again, I think we covered most of the discussion on that, but I know that the superintendent's talked to Fran Marola about, you know, supplying the necessary materials and appliances, whatever needs, in terms of upgrading the facility. So I think, in my mind, probably an appropriate and adaptive reuse for that facility.
I'll make a motion to approve or to authorize the superintendent for permission to use the Auger House for special education school work program for the 21, 22 school year. Second.
Can I add two caveats to that, if everybody agrees? Just so it's clear that the Board of Education pay all the costs and that Fran Marola managed the project and make sure that it's all, everything is to proper spec and done the right way?
I'll add that.
Okay. Do you have that, Michelle?
Given that Public Works Director Marola supervises, and that they are responsible, and the Board of Education is responsible for any cost involved.
Correct, but Franny Marola should have a final say in... I mean, he'll work with the Board of Education, obviously, but he should have final say on, you know, the renovations.
And any renovation check.
Looking for something else to do, Franny? You looking for something else to do? Okay.
Considering this building's been vacant for, I can't remember how long. Seems to be a good use for it, and it's for residents and students around the town. I think we should embrace it.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay. The motion was made by Councilor Dooty, second by Councilor Lucia. Any further discussion? All right, can I have a vote, Michelle?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay. Next is a request from the superintendent of schools for the return of the special education excess cost grant money to be used for the next academic year.
Anthony, what is that?
To date, we receive 139,701. We will get another installation, installment probably in the May-June timeframe. It's something you've done in the past, where you, the money typically comes to us, and you periodically will allow them to use it in subsequent fiscal year.
So this is in addition to anything else?
Correct.
Because I thought it was explained to me that this was already, is part of the budget, and it's money that the state refunds us for money that we've allocated. Maybe I had that wrong, that's why I'm asking.
The excess grant, I don't know the numbers, I think it's like six and a half times, whatever your per pupil cost is. If you spend more than six and a half times that, that's what the state reimburses you, and that's what this money is. The Board of Ed is usually made whole, so it does end up being surplus money that goes to the town historically. But again, there's been instances where you guys have kicked it back to them to use in years where you haven't given them increases or whatever. You let them use this in the following year. So again, 139,701 is to date. We should be getting another installment, probably in the next two weeks, maybe, something like that.
Do we know how much that'll be?
Negative.
So it is somewhat of a rebate, a refund, or something to that nature?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, just to be clear, the program that it's for is fully funded, and then this is excess?
Correct, correct. Or they get special ed money back, and then they get the special ed excess grant. Again, I don't have the exact number. Maybe, summary, six and a half times seems to stick in my head. Whatever the per pupil cost is on average, if you spend X amount of multiples of that, that's when the state takes in, gives you the additional money back that you spent. I can give them the exact number for you, what the multiples are.
So can we table this?
Yeah, you can table it.
I'd like to table it till we get more information.
Second.
Is there any impact, or are we going to miss out on something if we table it? Or is there a time sensitivity to it?
That's not going to be used until next year, so July 1st. So you got time? That's not going to be used until next year, so July first. So you got time?
Okay. I got a motion from Councilor Golden, second from Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any further discussion?
Yeah, in terms of information gathering, my recollection is we've turned this money over to the Board of Ed for at least the last couple of years, so we get a historical perspective of what we've done and for how many prior years we've done it. Anthony, sure, where are you at?
The seventeen, eighteen year, you did not turn it over to them. It was about two hundred thousand dollars totally. The eighteen, nineteen...
Before you go on, was that a flatline year or not? Or that was?
Oh, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay.
I'm good, but I don't know how you know.
I know, I was just testing you.
All right, thanks. The eighteen, nineteen year, we kept it. It was about two hundred and ten, two hundred and five thousand. Nineteen twenty, it was sixty-seven initially and another seventeen, about eighty-five. And we did kick that back to the Board of Ed in nineteen twenty. This will be the twenty twenty-one number now we're looking at. So it's kind of gone both ways. In the last few years, like I said, nineteen twenty, we kicked it back to them. Eighteen nineteen, we kept it. Nineteen twenty, we kept it. Our seventeen, eighteen, we kept it, but...
I know last year was a bigger increase, though. That's probably why we kept it.
Last year we gave it to them.
No.
Nineteen twenty.
Yeah, but I mean, the year before it was a bigger...
Eighteen nineteen.
Yeah.
And the money is specifically reinvested or goes back to special education services?
I don't think so.
Like, where does it, where does it go?
Goes to general fund.
Yeah.
We don't know where it goes.
But they never know from year to year what their cost is. It'll be in special ed. So some years they probably do, other years they probably don't.
Right. It's basically unbudgeted revenue that we get in and it flows back to the fund balance at the end of the day. Some additional revenue sources that was unbudgeted, just for the capable variance, and just falls back into the fund balance.
Has it ever been split or is it all, like, always been an all or nothing thing?
Um, I can check for it.
Because Franny, what do you, I don't want to put you on the spot, buddy. What do you figure it'll cost to renovate the Auger House? If you just, I know it's...
Yeah, I didn't do the numbers yet, but... Good. The handicap ramp, where she rocked the walls on the first floor, floor, painting.
I'm just thinking if we allocated some of the bathrooms, could we use it for the Auger?
Well, the school, the school, the school is paying for that.
Do you shift the costs to the Board of Ed, wasn't that your motion, Mike?
What's that?
Didn't you amend the motion to shift the costs to the Board of Ed?
Yeah.
Chances are they're going to use that money.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, just to...
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't.
It's a big show game, but we're trying to...
We discussed what needs to be done, but we haven't.
No, no numbers. Okay.
We know by the next meeting, Anthony, what's the additional?
Uh, I think, no, you can probably call, let's see if we find out, if we have truth.
It would help if we knew.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay, any further discussion? Michelle, you have the motion, right, in a second?
Should we table it, yes?
Okay, can I have a vote?
All in favor?
It's not tabled, it's not tabled.
Tabled.
Yeah.
Opposed? Abstained? We're tabling.
Tabled, yeah. Okay, next is a review and approval. I know, I get confused too, Marie. Next is review and approval of bid specifications for our RFQ slash P number nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one compensation study.
Yeah, so this was tabled at the last meeting and it's back before you for consideration on the salary RFQ number nineteen. This is, you know, compensation study, salary study, whatever you want to call it, but to take a look at where we are with respect to administrators group and taking a look at classifications, job descriptions and things of that nature with respect to how we match up with the market and, you know, attracting, keeping, retaining, matching packages with, with competing with other, other communities.
All right. Next, number thirteen, new business discussion in action.
That's okay, and like a motion to...
You gotta either approve it or deny it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion?
It's been reviewed by the town attorney, isn't it?
This particular one, actually, I don't know that Vin has reviewed this one. I can't say.
We'll have that take place and then we can vote on it once he clears it.
Table it?
Please make a motion. I make a motion to table RFQP number nineteen for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by Councilor Diamond, second by Councilor Gold. Any further discussion? Can we have a vote, please, Michelle?
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next is...
So, hold on a second. So we're, Vinny, Vin, you're going to look at this, right?
Yes, I put, I put review on my...
Okay, all right.
Okay. Next is new business discussion in action. A is coordinated medical emergency direction, C-Met designation.
Yes, on this one, this is an annual designation, but I'm a little hesitant and would suggest potentially at this point the council tabled this one pending a further review. The fire chief has brought to my attention some interesting information with respect to MedCom itself as an entity that I'd like to review with the town attorney and confirm before we assign the the per capita credit there to them. So we'll be meeting tomorrow. I'm going to add that to the list. Just something that came to my attention recently today I'd like to look into.
Motion to table the C-Met designation so that the town attorney has time to look into it with the town manager.
Second.
Councilor Plicia made the motion, second by Councilor Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any further, any more discussion on this? Further discussion? Can I have a vote, please, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next we have review and proposal process for audit services.
Mr. Mayor, Tara and I have spent some time working on this particular issue and we've done some research and found that there are towns that have provided an audit. But I think the kind of audit we're looking for is something called a performance slash compliance audit. We have some samples from some other towns. It would give us an idea of whether or not we have the proper procedures in place in terms of finances, in terms of purchasing, in terms of how we proceed with purchase hours, et cetera. And then after you've checked the performance and make sure that the processes are in place, are we in compliance? And I know that, and Tara could speak to that, Stratford just did it. And we also have some samples I'd be glad to share with Mike to send out. I think that's what we're looking for, more so than what we originally sent out. And I think it'll be helpful to us to find out whether or not we're doing what we should be doing in terms of performance part of finance and then are we in compliance with whatever, whatever those procedures are. It's interesting, Bloom Shapiro, I think, who, the one that did our, the company that did our other review in terms of the, having one finance director for Board of Ed, that same company just did it for Stratford. So there are, there are companies out there that would do that kind of study. And I think that's what we, what we've been looking for since the fall. So that's my suggestion. I don't know if anybody, if you want to mention it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I know, I think we were, we kept using the word forensic audit, which I think we know what happened. That's not a question, right? The question is, is it the right process or are the right processes being followed? Is our, you know, checks, are our checks and balances where they should be and, or is...
We don't have to bend the wheel. We have some samples. So I'd like to make a motion that we conduct a performance slash compliance audit of our financial system, our process.
So we need an RFQ to go out for that?
I would, I would just like to add, and Murray and I had talked about it too, is just for comparisons, to contact our current auditors and ask them, you know, if they were to add on an audit such as this with the annual audit, what would that, what would the financial impact be to the town? This way we could compare, you know, the RFP that goes out. Because my understanding is typically if an RFP goes out, it tends to be a little bit more expensive than if you have, if you use the people that are currently doing your annual audit.
And I know, Anthony, you've reached out. I don't know what the answer was, but I think, I think the answer was they can do it.
Right, the, I forwarded to Mike what their pros and wanted to know what their criteria was for sampling. And I forwarded it to Mike. I believe you forwarded that to you folks. Darren, obviously, you know, whatever you want to do, he'll give you a price for it. So it's a matter of setting up the criteria, what you're looking for, that he could factor in a cost. As to go back to Councilor Plicia's comment, would that be cheaper than, you know, hiring somebody from scratch? Potentially it could be. But he needs some guidance as to what you're trying to capture, then he can cost it out.
Well, I can send this to Mike.
Yeah, would you like to do, I mean, throw it to the body, but to do that step first in-house with our current auditor and or simultaneously with an RFP, throwing it back out on the street?
I would say simultaneously. This way you can compare.
Okay. Yeah, and did, I'm just curious, does Stratford, do they get into the sampling size or the...
I haven't, to be honest with you. We just kind of did this today, so I haven't had a chance to really study the RFP yet.
Okay, because that was one of, sort of the feedback and why we didn't get any response.
And I, we also have samples from some other states too, so we can compare those.
All right.
Okay, I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Mike? All right, motion was made by Councilor Diamond, second by Councilor Duddy. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
Can I just ask for clarification, please? Is this to create an RFQ for conduct of performance?
For a performance slash compliance audit of the financial process.
Right, so this is to create an RFQ? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Actually, I, you know, I was just going to try and clarify. I think we originally had an RFP as a, just a, just an RFP when it went out as number eleven. It was an RFP. I don't know if you want to make it an RFQ or if you just want to remain as an RFP.
Why don't you review the difference?
Well, the difference would be, like we do with the permanent project building committee, an RFQP is that we look at qualifications from firms first and then either in a separate envelope or we invite, so let's just say, you look at qualification, you get ten companies and you want to whittle down to, or shortlist down to something manageable, three or four, and then asked, you know, interview those three or four and then ask them for proposals. Or you could have it just proposals submitted at the same time, just separate, in a separate unopened envelope, and then look and review by qualifications first. This, this, this initial process we did was just, we just sent it out, send us your proposal without going into a two-step process.
Yeah, I could change mine to an RFP if Marie will change.
RFP, just a...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, you all set, Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next we have approval of job description for assistant building official.
Can we vote on that?
Yeah, I don't think that there will be an vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Opposed? Abstained?
You catch her.
Okay. All right, next is approval of job description for assistant building official.
Is that in the, is that in the packet? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little coming up short trying to find my...
Page fifty, Mike.
Page fif... No, I'll keep, I'll find it here.
This is the position that we, we're starting a month early, right? This is that position, right?
Yeah. It just, it mirrors and models the, the current building official job description with the exception, obviously, we're looking for, you know, it doesn't have supervisor level duties within that. So otherwise, it pretty much reads like the building official.
Make a motion to approve the job description of assistant building official.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Duddy, second by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay. Next we have a memo from Michelle Knockward regarding bid results from RFP slash Q number fourteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, Town Engineer Consultant Services.
I, I found it very difficult to compare these RFPs. They're all over the map. It was kind of like with what we got with the trash contracts. It's like, it's not apples to apples. It's very, very confusing. I don't know about anybody else, but I don't know how you could compare them. They're so different.
The difficulty also is what we're getting is a unit cost on an hourly basis. How many hours are we going to be a specific consultant? No way of comparing it to what we're paying the town engineer right now.
Need more time?
I think, I think the general consensus from the council members that I've spoken to is that everybody's kind of moving away from this consulting firm and focusing a little bit more on just hiring a full-time town engineer.
What is the status of, we know the status of posting, of posting, I think, weren't we talking about parallel tracks at some point?
I can report out that we had five applicants, two that were qualified. We interviewed two and we have what I consider, and I'm sure that the committee agrees, an outstanding candidate for the position. So we could move forward with that and I can report out in executive session on that process.
Don't mean to put you on the spot, Franny. What do you think?
As far as...
Town engineer?
I think the person that we, we should, we should hire a town engineer person.
Thank you.
The way this is, the way this is, is, you know, it's... I talked to a couple of towns and I know my call two or three himself. I actually talked to a couple of engineers, but it's, it's, it puts a lot, you're calling for services, what you're doing. You're paid by the hour. So if you have a lot of projects, it could be very expensive. We have a couple that are coming, like Toon Lakes Road has to be engineered. It would be expensive, you know? There's no, like, I think with, I envisioned a number and with services that hung around that, you know, what are you going to give us? But they do it by the hour. And all the towns that we've talked to, that's exactly what they do. So anything in between, if you have to, you know, look at drainage problems or whatever, that's, even though I do that, but I mean, everything falls on my end in the field. And then if we think we need a service, then we have to call the engineer to do the work. Plus we have RMS for stuff that we hire. Plus, we have RMS for stuff that we tire out, so I don't, I don't see it being a cost savings. It's gonna create work for me, it's gonna create work for Mike. See, we're gonna be calling, whatever, and then if he comes to a meeting, so we sit here, you know, you're gonna pay him, and comes to meetings, paying to go out to the sites.
I think it was worthwhile to do it, to, just to find out the information, 'cause it just, it answers that question for us.
I agree a hundred percent.
But I, but I think-
I think it was something we had to do, and we did it, and talking to these other towns, you know, it varies, one year it could be, Mike got one, I think, one year they spent three hundred and fifty thousand in engineering services, and then another year might have been a hundred thousand, and they budgeted twenty-five thousand. So, you're all over the place, and everyone that I talked to, and they're all small towns, Killinworth, Durham.
Yeah, well, actually, with the exception of East Hampton, which is comparable to our size, and again, to Killinworth and Durham, that don't have sewer, or any sewer component.
Yeah, none of this included in sewer stuff.
Smaller towns, no sewer, East Hampton, same, same size, and a joint facility with Colchester, so they have the same, pretty much the same structure, and they still pay, have a budget for their engineering services on a, you know, as needed basis that they go out to. And so, their structure i- is a facility, or utility, utilities director, and they hired, two thousand nineteen, a public works director with an engineering degree, so they have, and they, and they still, having an inside person, they still go out with, and pay thirty-five thousand a year on engineering services.
Well, with our current structure, we still hire engineering services, right?
Do.
Right, so, 'cause I did a little, you know, work on this myself, and I realized that, you know, we do, in my opinion, we do need an engineer, because these other services are the ones that we're gonna be farming out for different aspects, whatever that may be, throughout the year, so, I mean, I'm-
Plus all the public where you digs, even though-
Yeah.
Engineer, our engineer, Kurt does it now, plus the oldenism for sewers, but, you know, that can get expensive.
Yeah, I've spoken with, I've spoken with people in the town hall here, that work with Kurt, and are working with him for years, and I think probably four or five different people that I've spoke, spoken to, and they all feel the same, that we need a full-time employee instead of a service. So, I tend to agree with them.
Seems like everybody's on the same page, but it seems odd not to ask Kurt what his feelings are, having him sit here like this, so.
I totally agree, you need a body to respond, to handle the day-to-day, routine operations. Taking back, you know, consulting services a little further, it's not bad to have somebody on call, a firm that you pre-qualified, and you need to do something. You just might be able to sort of delve into that once you get somebody full-time on board, but if you're big projects, if you have somebody that is pre-qualified, and you need to do something, you've already gone through the process. A lot of towns do do that, it's a good thing to have, so if you have, take the task, you need to done, and have the firm ready to go, and then, and they give you prices, an hourly prices, and you pick the basis on that, and then you pass them with that given task, kind of rough. That's, that's a lot of towns do.
So, that would save us from doing extra RFPs.
Extra RFPs, very little thing.
Yeah, there's small, there's smaller jobs, like intersection, or widening a road, or something like that, there's small things that you go out and do RFPs, it takes a month to get it all done, and, you know.
My, my argumentation would be, you need a full-time body, you can get that person in place, and we'll agree with Mike, he's a very good applicant candidate, he's gonna be a great fit for the town. Then if you go forward, let, I was tasked in reviewing proposals at that time, and then maybe have a further discussion. You don't have to, you don't have to move right away, I think you have a hundred and twenty days to review a proposal. That would, to me, would be a lot of things to do.
Yeah, that's how, that's how I looked at it, after I started digging into it myself, is that you need someone there for the oversight.
Right.
And then, and then I looked at all those bids, and I said, well, that's kind of, you know, I could, I could see that as similar to what we do for equipment. When you have all those different companies you can rent equipment from, well, here, here you go, we have all these prices right here, it's a price index for the most, you know, forsaken argument, that, it's all set up there for what you need.
So, it could potentially streamline things if we had a firm, or a retainer, or whatever, right?
Yeah, on call.
On call.
Yeah, you know, when you need them, like, you've already pre-qualified, you've already, you've got pricing on it, and then you just lock it, take the task.
Would save us, would save us some time, too.
But a key element of that has got to be a firm that the town engineer can work with, so you really need that person on board to tell you-
Right.
Yeah, I'm good with Smith and Jones.
Right.
Right. So, I think we need to focus on getting a person in here.
Yeah, I think that's what Kurt said, aye, Grant, that's a good point.
So, do we have to back on this?
Table it?
Do we table it?
I don't, I don't even think we have to table it, just keep it, just keep it on, and then that's it.
Just leave it on, Mike?
Yeah, okay, just leave it on, and then when the new town engineer comes on, he could review that and bring it back, and we could award to a certain company to be on-call basis.
Okay.
'Cause it's active for a hundred and twenty days, but.
Okay, no need a motion or anything?
No.
Alright, let's, let's move into citizen statements.
They added that E on-
You got E.
One that was added earlier.
We added E, hazmat amendment.
Oh, wait.
The word hazmat services.
Okay, Mike, was that you?
Yeah. I just give the town a vote.
Yeah.
Based on the recommendation tonight from the permanent project building committee.
So, the permanent project building committee recommends that Enviro Med Services be awarded the con, the contract for RFPQ slash P number eighteen, two thousand twenty slash two thousand twenty-one. Hazmat construction inspections for the North Branford High, New North Branford High School in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is an estimated cost based on their hourly rates and number of tests that will be required for testing at the New North Branford High School. This also includes a seven hundred and fifty dollar fee to waive the ten dollar, excuse me, the ten-day wait period with the Department of Health, DPH, for the state of Connecticut.
Second.
I'm not sure that it matters very much, but I thought I heard thirteen matters than eighteen, when we did the amendment.
Well, no, it was a thirteen E on the, on the-
He added it.
On the agenda line.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I thought it was described as RFP thirteen.
Oh.
I could be wrong.
Yeah, I didn't write that, I didn't make, I didn't make those notes.
No, but what does it say on there, is what you said?
Oh, on there it says eighteen.
Yeah, I heard eighteen, so.
It says eighteen.
Okay, so, motion was made by Deputy Mayor Zampiano, seconded by Councilor Duty. Any further discussion? Can we have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Alright, next we have citizen statements and petitions.
Bill Sabristano, San Side Drive. The order house, I have no problem with the water they're using, but I remember a few years ago, we were thinking of renting that place out, fixing up and renting. But the real question is the police station, has it been decided what's gonna be done with that old station? I mentioned before, maybe you could use professional building on the front level, and some sort of a town meeting thing on the bottom level. Otherwise, what is it gonna cost, bring down a building like that?
Unfortunately, we're probably a year out from that, so. A year for the police department to be built, so we're probably a year out from any decision on that property.
Has it been determined what you're gonna do with that building after?
No, no, no.
I have a couple of things, I, meeting started shortly, sorry. Anyway, nine forty-four, Tuck Road, probably two years ago, you had this on the agenda for about a year, to remediate that property over there, and then you signed off all contingent on the guy planting some grass and removing all that equipment. I've mentioned this before, last fall. Well, about eight out of ten pieces of equipment are still there, he's got, he's got a couple of big payloaders that go in and out, looks like they go to jobs, but now that it's all grown in, there's old trucks and stuff that are buried back there. Has, I mentioned it before, has anybody looked into the? And, you know, we tabled the blight audience a year and a half ago. I know Tom Hogarty's back from, but, you know, someday we're gonna get back into it again, but maybe we should consider a new town planner, what he, how he, how he thinks about blight, and what we should put in the ordinance. Actually, I watched some other town meetings, and Branford, after all these years, are actually putting an ordinance together, finally, they, they went on for years, too. And just an update on how I got involved with blight, was a guy, fortunately, an older gentleman, my age, on my street, and he's a real severe hoarder. I just, this, this is what happens, I'm no expert either, but man was widowed a couple of years ago, and he went off to, found another woman in Pennsylvania, married, he stayed in Pennsylvania, and he, he didn't close up his house all over the winter, the pipes burst, and he's Pennsylvania, actually, he was hospitalized out there. The house is ruined, there's been dumpsters, who've taken stuff out of that house for like months now. I go around the block, he's on the, there's a service truck there, I don't know what the guy's working on inside, but I guess the insurance companies pay for it. Well, it's, it's what happens when there's neglect, neglect. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Bill.
Okay, Bill brought up nine forty-four, Tuckit. I'm very satisfied with what's going on, Tom Hogarty just happened to call me today, Tom Hogarty's doing his job, as most town officials are in this town. Nothing moves fast, but it is moving, so yes, some equipment has been moved, and believe me, I'm hearing it from my higher up, 'cause we can see it from our kitchen table. So, thank God for weeds right now, but it is, he's doing what he can, unfortunately, the property's in the name of a great guy, the person that's living in the property, questionable how fast he's gonna move, but there has been progress, so, Bill, just so you know, we're getting someplace. But you know who's there, so if you get anywhere's, you're getting someplace. Thank you.
Thanks, Cliff.
Yeah, Tom does, Tom does an excellent job, Cliff.
Just one comment on Facebook from Willie Del Camera thanking Cliff Potter for his comments before.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Alright, move into executive session. Who do we want?
Second.
You gonna need Franny at all, or just the town manager and town attorney?
Yeah, we need, we need two.